Number thirteen, two thousand and twelve, meeting of the San Carlos City Council. Successor agency to the redevelopment agency. If you'd all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Changes to the order of the agenda. Staff, any changes?
We do have one change this evening, Mr. Mayor. We would ask that council consider item ten A right after the consent calendar.
So, item ten A. Okay. Is that all right with everybody?
Aye.
Okay. Let me just mark it on here, so I've got it. Sixty-six. Okay. All right. Got that noted. And that brings us to reports from closed session. Mr. Rivers.
No reportable items from closed session tonight.
You know, we're in there a long time.
Yeah.
All right. Council of communications and announcements. Anybody have anything?
I went to the Housing Leadership Day with Mark Sawicki. We both attended, went to different sessions, and some very interesting information about housing and funding opportunities, senior housing, and a variety of good information that they shared that day. And I wanted to check with the other council members to see if anyone was going to be able to go to the Council of Cities meeting this Friday. I have kind of a conflict, but if no one else, you are going, okay, then I won't be seeing you there. But since it will be difficult for me to be able to fit that in, I just wanted to make sure that someone was representing the city there. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else going to that? Mark, you are?
No, no.
Oh, okay. Probably not.
I want an update on the tunnel.
On what?
On the tunnel.
Okay. You can report back to the rest of us.
Absolutely.
Yes, very good. Okay. Anyone else? Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just had a few quick things. One is, I've been having some fun spending time with the recology folks trying to study up and learn a little bit more about what's driving our cost increases on garbage and recycling rates, which hopefully I'll be able to synthesize that in some fashion and bring it back. I also just wanted to mention in passing that I think we all received a copy of a complaint that was filed by a citizen relating to staff activities of the staff member, and since I know that's a sensitive subject, I just wanted folks to be aware of the fact that that was received, that it was in fact being processed and reviewed by the city manager. I also spent a very delightful evening with a number of representatives from different commissions, or different commissions, a few weeks ago. I know that's something they do roughly quarterly, and I think they typically in the past invited, you know, a council member and a representative from each of the commissions to attend it. And I learned a lot about all of the things that our various commissions are doing there. Thank Ann Iverson for hosting it. Two things, in fact, that I came away with from there. One is, I think I even now more strongly agree than I did before with Councilmember Clapper's point that we probably ought to be looking for ways to improve communication between the council and the commissions. There seem to be a lot of things that they like to know that we're in the know on and that would probably help them in their jobs. And the other thing that had occurred to me was, I wonder if at one of our upcoming strategic planning meetings, we could put aside some time to talk about how we could proactively use the commissions on major projects. In other words, for example, take something like the Transit Village, or Ruela Plaza, or whatnot. Actually consciously decide ahead of time where we would like to get input from EDAC. We would like to get input from some other commission. So, that's not something we can discuss tonight, but hopefully it'll be something we can discuss at one of our planning sessions. Thanks.
Okay, very good. That would bring us to item five, which is public comment, and I do have one speaker card. This is a chance, by the way, for any member of the public to address the council on an item that is not on our agenda. And we generally give about two minutes to each speaker, and we give about ten minutes to this agenda item in total. So, that's about five speakers, but like I said, I've got one card. So, Mr. Dotweiler, if you'd like to come to the mic.
Hi. Appreciate the opportunity to address you, and I guess to begin, I actually have copies of a letter and some relevant data. I would like to ask the council to please reconsider, or reevaluate, and hopefully change the dirt hauling fee attached to the letter that I've just distributed, or a number of data points from other neighboring towns.
That one, I apologize. Would you move that microphone a little closer?
Sorry.
No, you don't have to lean over, just, that's perfectly right. Thank you.
I would like to state first that that list that I've given you is unexpurgated. I haven't deleted any data points that were, you know, in not support of my point. That is basically the entirety of the data that I found either by Googling or by calling some of our most immediate towns. As you see there, in Redwood City, the cost of hauling a yard of dirt varies by mileage, but in my particular, it's twenty cents a mile per cubic yard. In my case, that amounts to a dollar twenty. In Belmont, for import of dirt, it's nothing. In San Mateo, it's nothing. In Woodside, which is hardly a low-rent district, it's a dollar a cubic yard. I've also included a couple of data points that I found on Google from some towns I think in Southern California, where it's sixteen dollars per truckload. Given that a truck is about eight to ten cubic yards, that amounts to something like a dollar eighty a cubic yard. The average of all those is ninety-six cents per cubic yard. So, I guess, at this point, if I thought it appropriate to be a little more casual, I would ask the council if anybody cared to hazard a guess as to what the number is in San Carlos. The amount that it costs to move one cubic yard of dirt in this town is, I'll say for the sake of expediency and formality, is eleven dollars per cubic yard. That is twelve times the average of those other six towns. It is twenty-five times the average of our immediate neighbors. It seems to me to be the equivalent of having something like a two-hundred-and-ten percent local sales tax. I can't, yeah, my personal interest in this is a project that I all but need to do in order to sort of stabilize the hill behind my house, which is eroding. I need to bring in a large volume of soil or dirt in order to backfill some retaining walls. It's a little bit frustrating, needless to say, that, you know, in addition to the relatively high construction costs of doing this, I'm then saddled with an additional fee from the city that amounts to something like twenty thousand dollars for the fill alone, never mind the fees associated with the rest of the construction. I guess I feel that such fees are a disservice to the citizens of San Carlos, who I think are entitled to at least some kind of expectation that fees be usual and customary, or at least rational, and in the interest of the city. I can't really fathom that this is any of those. They're certainly neither usual nor customary, and I think a case can be made that they're in the disinterest of the town, which really should be keeping fees as low as possible, I think, in order to foster development, both because it will ultimately better, it'll ultimately better the town's infrastructure, both quantitatively and qualitatively, and arguably even increase the property tax base and all sorts of things like that. So, I, you know, I don't know what legal standing I ultimately have here in making this request, but it seems to me that I can't imagine why the fee is where it is, and I guess I would request that the council please reconsider it and hopefully bring it in line with the fees that are assessed by our sister cities on the peninsula.
Thank you very much. Just so the council knows, Mr. Dotweiler did send a letter or email correspondence.
Sorry if this was redundant.
No, that's okay. It's perfectly fine. But he had sent correspondence, I don't know if the rest of the council got it. I did get it as the mayor. Okay? So, this piece of correspondence here is more, fills in a lot more information, and he's obviously done his homework. I responded back to him and let him know that typically we review fees when we work on our budget. It's around the same time of the budget that we also review fees, and I did let him know that fees have to be justified. You can't just willy-nilly throw a fee out there. It has to be justified. So, I just want the council to know that he has gotten that response from somebody in the council.
Sorry, I actually didn't, maybe it got eaten by my snag filter?
Well, you didn't.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, you should go look then for an email from mgrocott@cityofsancarlos.org. I did write you back.
Okay. I apologize if I missed that.
No, that's, okay.
I will certainly check again.
Yeah, well, there you have it, and you can find it someplace, I suppose. It might, like you say, might be in a spam catch someplace. But I appreciate you coming and letting the whole council know about this and presenting this to us. I'll talk to the city manager about it and see what we might be able to do. I'll just give you one comment. Normally, we don't do much interchange on public speaking like this, but the one thing I can tell you is that even for us, there are certain fees where we just eat it, you know? We don't charge the full cost recovery, and that could be what's going on here, because we do study fees, and the idea is that a fee will cover, is a cost recovery item. In this case, it's, you know, usually it's staff time, but it can also be impact to our roads and things like that, but we can look into it, and we'll definitely have some correspondence with you.
Yeah, I guess if I may.
Go ahead.
To the extent that it is an impact to the road, which I certainly understand, it's heavy hauling a lot of it around, then if it were to be rationally justified, it would seem to me that something along the lines of what Redwood City does would be more defensible, right, where they charge per mile, rather than just a flat fee. That's, you know, I could be hauling it five feet over San Carlos streets and still be paying eleven dollars, which is kind of crazy.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other folks here for public comment. So, item six is approval of the consent calendar, and just a reminder to the council then, after item six, we'll take up item ten A.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
And these items will be approved unless there's anybody that wants to pull one. I don't hear anybody wanting to pull one, either from the public, or the council, or staff. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. All right. That brings us then to the agenda item where we changed it to item ten A, and this is consideration of a resolution adopting memorandum of understanding for the American Local eight-fifty-six Freight Checkers Clerical Employees and Helpers Union and IBT Teamsters. Rebecca.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. First, I'd like to thank you for taking this item out of order tonight. I do greatly appreciate that. Before you tonight is a memorandum of understanding tentatively agreed to by the Teamsters unit. This group is comprised of fifteen budgeted positions, including our senior maintenance workers, our maintenance workers, and our mechanic. The resolution before you includes a two percent increase in base salary for a one-year term. This is the first time since two thousand and ten that a salary increase is being considered by the council for this unit. In two thousand and ten, this unit agreed to concessions totaling a five percent reduction in total compensation. So, the MOU tonight proposes a two percent increase in base wages. This cost is approximately twenty-four thousand, four hundred dollars, and it has already been factored into the budget that was adopted in June. A summary of the key components of the MOU are a one-year term through October thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen, the increase in base wage of two percent effective November fifth, two thousand and twelve, the continuation of the same health benefit that our other city employees receive, where employees pick up the first five percent of medical increases, and the establishment of a VIBA, or a voluntary health benefit association program for new hires, as of March twenty-eighth, two thousand and eleven. This is where employees can contribute an amount of their accrued vacation equal to two hundred dollars per year into a tax-deferred medical account following separation of employment. So, I'd like to extend my thanks to the Teamsters unit for working with us so closely to bring this MOU before you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Questions from council?
No.
No questions? Okay, thank you. Discussion on the item?
No.
Nothing? Okay. Then all it takes is a motion.
Okay. I move that we approve resolution number two-zero-one-two-dash? Seventy-four? Seventy-four, adopting the memorandum of understanding between the City of San Carlos and the American Local eight-five-six Freight Checkers Clerical Employees and Helpers Union IBT parentheses, Teamsters, close parentheses.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. Takes us to our next item, which is back in order, is item seven, reports to council. Does staff have any thing they'd like to report?
No non-adjourned reports this evening.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Item eight is a study session. We have this set for about an hour, and it's to review the draft sewer master plan. That's the booklet that we all received. Mr. Walter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director. Tonight before you to help you understand a little bit more about our sewer collection system, and we'll be presenting information that has been compiled into a master plan. And I will start out the staff presentation with some background and some context, and then we have our consultant, Gisa Ju, from RMC Water and Environment, who will be making the technical portion of the presentation, and then I'll come back up and kind of wrap it up for council before we have an opportunity for your questions and comments. So, the purpose of tonight's study session, as it relates to the sewer master plan, I want to be able to provide you some background on the consent decree and its requirements. That's the consent decree with the baykeeper. Also, to help inform and educate you regarding the overall condition of our sewer collection system, and provide you information regarding the funding and rehabilitation needs of the collection system as well. And we would like for you to give us the feedback for this final master plan document, which we would like to bring back to you in January of two thousand and thirteen, which will keep us essentially in time for the three-year window that the consent decree had for a number of components that we needed to complete. There's no action required by you for this item tonight, but providing the feedback that we need in order to be able to finalize the document. So, some background as it relates to the reason we're here. The city received the notice of intent to sue from the San Francisco Baykeeper September two thousand and nine over violations of the Federal Water Pollution Control Act, and the city entered into negotiations and was able to obtain a consent decree with Baykeeper in February two thousand and ten. And at this point, at that point in time, the city had recognized that there were a number of problems and issues with our collection system, and it was evidenced by sanitary sewer overflows that were occurring, which give you a sense of problems in the pipes, in the mainline pipes, in the laterals, and other things. So, this largely due to the age of the system, for the most part, but also from maintenance and rehabilitation that had not occurred. So, by developing the sewer master plan, we're taking responsibility for this long-term maintenance and performance of the collection system, which is critical to the quality of life for our residents. As you can imagine, the problems that occur when you have sewer backups of a large number that people have to deal with. It's probably the least fun part of any infrastructure that the city has to be responsible for. So, the consent decree requirements, we needed to achieve a ninety percent reduction in sanitary sewer overflows by the year two thousand and seventeen, and that was from a number that had been identified as sixty-seven to no more than four per year. And these are overflows which occur both in the mainline, as well as in the laterals that serve homes and businesses. They mandated several management practices that the city needed to implement, and on the screen in front of you, I won't read every one of them, but a very important one, the capacity assurance planning, that we would be planning for a system that would minimize or eliminate those overflows. The sewer condition assessment and rehabilitation replacement program, which essentially is an evaluation of the collection system and its condition, so that we know what we need to repair and replace and be able to find funds to accomplish that. There were other items as well, focus cleaning of hotspots and laterals where we know we have problems, and recurring issues that we needed to take care of. Chemical root control, which is a very innovative way to keep roots from invading your system and essentially creating a lot of the problems that you find. Other requirements from a preventative maintenance standpoint, a work plan for the city to conduct sewer inspections, the creation of an operations manual for our maintenance crew to follow in their management and operation of the collection system, and regular and ongoing inspection of the collection system, a key point. The capacity assurance engineering study called for hydraulic modeling of the collection system and flow monitoring, so that we knew where the highest flows were and those points where the overflows were most likely to occur. The development of the capacity assurance plan, and then we had to come up with a plan to implement those capacity insurance projects, which are not cheap and are going to be starting here in the next probably six to nine months. And then there were significant penalties for noncompliance. So, progress to date, the things that have been implemented in the couple of years since the, almost three years since the consent decree was signed, a focused sewer cleaning program, a root foaming program, computerized maintenance and management system, staff was added for the increased workload and responsibilities. Council last spring approved the rates to be used for the capacity improvement projects, and we have on order a video inspection truck and equipment for our in-house staff to use, which was approved in the budget as well. We have a project, which we began to do cleaning and video closed-circuit television inspection of the collection system. That is nearly complete. It's been a process where we had a problem with the first contractor, we hired a second contractor, we're back in business, and we're nearly complete with that work, which is extremely valuable for understanding the system and its condition. And the collection system master plan that's before you in its draft form is ready, where we feel like we're at the final point with that. And then as we are going to head into the spring, we have put out an RFP to be able to conduct a sewer rate study, so that as we need to combine all the different elements of our collection system and our wastewater program to know how much the rates need to be in order to fund them, this is something that we'll be working on as we head towards spring. Really good news, this SSOs have been reduced by over fifty percent since two thousand and nine, and the target is well ahead of what the consent decree mandated. So, good progress by staff that's responsible for these programs and continuing to make progress as it relates to all these consent decree requirements, which are lengthy and complicated. So, the focus of the master plan and what we'll be talking about tonight is really these two areas that are highlighted, the capacity assurance improvements and the sewer condition assessment and rehabilitation replacement. So, what I'd like to do now is call up Gisa Ju from RMC Water and Environment to continue the presentation.
I'm going to talk about the two aspects of the master plan, the capacity assurance and the condition assessment. We did come before you in March of this year to talk about the capacity assurance plan, because that was a required submittal to Baykeeper at that time. So, I'll go through this maybe a little faster than I did back in March, but again, if there are any questions on some of the technical aspects, please don't hesitate to ask. The requirements for the capacity assurance work was to conduct a flow monitoring program in the system, which was done in the winter of two thousand and ten, two thousand and ten-eleven, develop a computer hydraulic model of the system, so that we can predict the flows that would be conveyed and where the capacity issues might be. We needed to identify improvements that would be needed in the system to convey peak wet weather flows for a ten-year frequency design storm. This was the design event that was specified in the consent decree, without overflows. And then develop a report with a five-year schedule for implementing those improvements. The consent decree also asked to identify, you know, sources of infiltration in the system, infiltration inflow, or INI, which is the reason why the city experiences these high wet weather flows, and remove major sources if possible. And then there is a schedule for construction of those projects and submittal of a final compliance report after the program is completed. Now, this is a graph just of a typical flow, here we go, typical flow pattern in, at one of the sites that we monitored. We had seventeen meters in the ground in that winter. This is a two-month period of time in the wintertime, and you can see in January, when it didn't rain very much, this is typical dry weather pattern. In this case, for this meter, the, you know, the flow is typically on the order of about three million gallons per day. That's a flow rate, okay? But when it rains, as we had a couple of large storms in December of two thousand and ten, that the flow can go up quite high, you know? In this case, you know, almost, you know, a factor of eight or ten. And in fact, the overall peaking factor for the city is about nine for the design storm. Now, that's pretty high. It's not unique. There are definitely a lot of cities of similar age, systems of similar age and construction that have peaking factors of that magnitude, so you're definitely not alone in that respect. So, where does that INI come from? This is just a graphic that illustrates, you know, a lot of potential ways in which extraneous water can get into the system. The most common way is through cracks in pipes, both mainline pipes and the sewer laterals that serve houses and businesses. Sometimes there can be direct connections like roof drains, roof downspouts, that are connected directly to the sanitary sewer system. That is, that is not, you know, that's an illegal connection, but they do exist in some areas. And, you know, occasionally, there may be cross-connections between storm and sanitary system. Likely there aren't any direct connections like that, but you can also have indirect connections where water from, in the storm sewer leaks out through cracks and into the soil and into cracks in the sanitary sewer. So, there are various ways in which this water can get into the system. This is a picture, not from your system, but showing, you know, how the water can leak in through these pipe joints or cracks during wet weather. One way of detecting sources of INI is a process called smoke testing, and that's a process where you put a, basically a smoke blower into a manhole, and you blow a non-toxic smoke into the sewer, and then that smoke will emerge at the ground surface where there may be, you know, ways of the water getting into the sewer, or if it's a roof leader, for example, it will come up out of the roof leader. So, it's a way of primarily finding the more egregious sources of INI, what we call direct inflow. And we did some smoke testing this past fall, October, I guess it was, in two areas, what we call, it's a little hard to say, Basin fourteen and Basin five. These were two areas that had the highest peaking factor, so we wanted to see, you know, what we might find. This is a primarily residential area. This is largely industrial, commercial. And we didn't find a lot of sources, and again, you don't necessarily find them all through smoke testing. What you're really trying to find are the most extreme ones, but we found one catch basin where smoke was emerging. It was probably an indirect connection, not a direct connection, because there was kind of a delay for the smoke to come out. We found a couple of low-lying manholes. Here's one that has, you can't see it, but it has a hole in the cover, which is unusual. Some covers do have holes, but it's in the gutter, so if there's any flooding or- So if there's any flooding or runoff in the gutter, it can easily get into the sewer. We found two roof downspouts that are connected to the sewer system, and the city should probably address those with the property owners. And clean outs are another source. Sometimes they're defective, they have, they're broken or the caps are missing, and you'll see, in this case, you can actually see the smoke coming out. And five defective laterals, and basically, smoke coming out of the ground over the service lateral. So they're not, we didn't find, I was actually very surprised that we didn't find as many as I would have expected in these areas. And it may be just that, you know, if the soil is a little wet, sometimes the soil, the smoke can't come up, or if the ground cover is impervious, you know, the smoke can't come through. So the other thing we did was build a hydraulic model, and this is just an example of what the model can show us. This is a pipe, in, you know, one reach of pipe, couple of blocks long. And you can see the pipe here, the ground surface in green, and the manholes. And this blue line here is the water level in that system under the peak of the design storm that the model is simulating. And where that water level comes close to the ground, you of course have a risk of overflow. So our criteria for identifying where we needed to develop an improvement to the system to minimize this risk was that if the water level came within one foot of the ground, which is, which is not a conservative criteria, that's a pretty, you know, liberal criteria, I'd say. Those areas were identified for projects that needed to be done in the short term, in the five-year capacity assurance plan. And in some other areas where the ground, the water level wasn't quite as high, say within four feet, we identified those as capacity projects, but as a lower priority. Some of the types of projects are increasing pipe sizes by replacing a pipe with a larger diameter pipe, or putting in a parallel pipe to, again, add capacity. One of the largest of the proposed projects is a wet weather pump station down on Industrial Road, just north of Britton. There are two major trunk sewers in Industrial Road that convey quite a lot of flow, and they don't have sufficient capacity. So the proposal is to put in a wet weather pump station. It would only operate during wet weather, and it would serve to relieve those two trunk sewers. And then there would be a new force main, a pipe, that would basically pump that flow directly to these SBSA pump station. INI reduction is probably, you know, the most desirable way to deal with capacity issues, because you're taking care of the problem. But what we find is to be able to reduce the INI enough to eliminate the need for these improvements would take a tremendous amount of sewer rehabilitation. It would be very expensive, and it's probably not feasible to do that within the time period that you need to address these issues. So while it's definitely a long-term goal to reduce INI, it's not, not in general, a short, a practical short-term solution. And the capacity improvements that are actually shown here in orange on this map were approved as part of the 2012 rate hearings earlier this year. So that, those costs are already in your budget. There's some additional projects shown in green, again, those are the less critical ones. And this is the same table that we showed you in March, that identifies and prioritizes those 11 capacity improvement projects that total about $9 million. All right. So now, let's move on to the condition of the system. As Jay mentioned, that the city is doing a TV inspection program that was started in 2010, and about 60% of the system was televised during that initial program, the remaining 40% is, will be done this year. What we did is we analyzed that TV inspection data. Basically, when you TV inspect a sewer, you code, you record every defect that the operator sees, you know, whether it's a crack or an offset joint or roots coming in. Each one is coded and it's graded. It's given a grade from one to five. So we have a lot of data that we can analyze to identify where pipes need to be repaired or replaced, and what's the best method of doing that. There's certain repairs that need to be done, you know, in the short term, if, you know, if there's an imminent danger of a pipe failing. Although, we generally don't find a lot of those, a lot of these, even egregious defects have probably been there for quite a while. They're probably stable, they're not good, but they're probably stable. And then, of course, we estimated the cost of that rehabilitation work. These are some typical problems. I don't know if they're typical, but they're some of the, some of the most notable problems, and these are actually from your system. Broken pipe, it's quite common, and old clay pipe, which is very prevalent in these older systems in this area. Offset joints, again, these are a source of leakage of infiltration, as well as if they're, if they're offset quite a bit, they can interfere with camera equipment or cleaning equipment, so not a good thing. Root intrusion, roots, from tree roots growing into the sewer, these can cause blockages, as well as cause, you know, structural damage when they, when they enter the pipe. This is an example of active infiltration. You usually don't see this unless you're actually TVing during rain, but sometimes you do if your pipe is under the groundwater table, for example. So again, these are, these are the kinds of things that we're finding in your system. So the focus of our analysis of this data is really looking at the major structural defects, you know, collapsed, broken pipe, large holes. Corrosion usually isn't too much of an issue, because that's mainly for larger concrete pipe, you don't have too much of that, I don't think you do, Paul, right? Large offset joints, significant root intrusion. We were looking at these, you know, at these more significant types of problems. And one thing to point out is that the consent decree has a table, it's called the timeframe for actions table in it, and it mandates that certain types of defects be repaired within certain timeframes. So the grade five defects, these are the most severe ones. You know, these might be collapsed pipe or holes where you can actually see the soil outside the pipe, you know, those are the most severe. Now, those are required to be, you know, unless they're in imminent danger of failure, they're required to be repaired within two years, or at least re-inspected to make sure they haven't gotten worse within a year. And then the grade four defects, you know, smaller holes, fractured pipe, are required to be repaired within five years or re-inspected within three years. So, you know, you have to keep this in mind when we're developing this rehabilitation program, is what is required in the consent decree. So what we did is we worked with city staff, engineering and operations staff, to develop a decision process, you know, how to make decisions on what types of defects needed to be repaired and what was the best method of repair or rehabilitation. And we then applied that decision process to the TV inspection data. And this chart shows the results. Basically, it's showing that pipes with major structural defects, you know, roughly 39 miles of pipes with major structural defects. I will say that even though we only had 60% of the system TVed at the time we did this work, we did extrapolate the results to the entire system. So this reflects, you know, a projection of the needs for the entire system. And, you know, to a lesser extent, offset joints and root intrusion, but the primary issue is the structural integrity of the pipes. And over 20% of the inspected pipes had those severe grade five defects, and, you know, quite a few of them had more than just one, which is why most of the recommended repair is not localized point repair, but is complete manhole-to-manhole replacement or lining of the pipe to restore its structural integrity. We estimated the cost for this work at $62 million, which is, you know, quite a large sum. I will say also, this includes replacement of lower laterals, the lower portion of the service laterals, whenever a line is, mainline is replaced. And those lower laterals do add, you know, quite a bit to the cost. I think we estimated it was, the lower laterals probably represent about 40% of the cost. So because of the magnitude of that number, we kind of went back to the drawing board to see, you know, is there, is there another option? So we looked at what we called a minimal point repair option. You know, as you recall, the consent decree requires that certain types of defects be repaired within certain timeframes. It's possible to just only deal with those defects and just point repair them. Basically, you just dig, you know, a small trench at the point where that defect is and replace a short segment of pipe. So that's an option. That's an option, and in general, it would be cheaper to do two-point repairs than to replace a whole manhole, manhole reach. However, later on down the line, that pipe is likely to require some additional rehabilitation or replacement. The less severe defects are going to get worse over time. So you don't get the benefit of a real comprehensive solution. It also has very minimal impact on INI if you just do isolated repairs. So, you know, again, it's possible to do that, and the cost would be about, you know, half of what we've projected using a more robust approach of doing more manhole-to-manhole replacement. And given the age of your system, your system is getting up there in age, you know, a lot of these lines have reached, are reaching the end of their useful lives. So the more comprehensive approach, as I mentioned, is more manhole-to-manhole replacement and lining. It will help restore the sewers to a better overall condition, and essentially extend the life of the system, which is what you're trying to achieve here, and probably have a more effective, more effect on reducing INI in the system. So that was the $62 million cost. Now, this is just for the rehabilitation, it doesn't include the capacity, which was the additional $9 million that you saw earlier. So this is just a, kind of a summary of the, you know, the minimal point repair approach versus the more comprehensive approach. We've assigned projects to the first five or six years of the program, and then the remaining 20, seven, years seven through 20. Again, the high priority capacity projects, the $9 million, are in that first phase, plus additional sewer rehabilitation. And then the second phase is primarily sewer rehabilitation to address the structural condition of the sewers. And I think, this is you.
That's all right. Okay, good. Thank you, Giseau. So council, as we, as we kind of think about the magnitude of that cost, one of the things, you know, to remember is with the rates that were increased in this last year in 2012, essentially, we had five years' worth of projects that we needed to be able to fund $9 million worth. So after that five-year point, those rates, if they were, if they remained the same, we would have that funding to apply towards further rehabilitation going forward. So in other words, you've made an investment to be able to do the work for these first five years, the $9 million worth, and that, if those rates stayed the same beyond that point, we would have additional money to apply towards this larger problem of the sewer rehabilitation that we have to face. So it's, again, but that's, that's at least part of what further discussions will have to take place, once we know the full magnitude of our system needs, plus we understand what the SBSA needs are out at the plant, and when we wrap that together in the rate study as we go forward after the first of the year. So as far as the program implementation goes, in the capacity assurance program, we need to move forward and implement those projects which were identified, that totaled about $9 million. We need to continue to identify the major sources of inflow and infiltration through smoke testing and other means, and then we need to make, to typically have our sewer maintenance crew be taking care of some of those, fixing some of those that are maybe more easily solved, and so that we can eliminate as many of those connections and infiltration sources as possible. And we need to make sure that we follow through with property owners who have, to make changes on their own property, to be sure that they do that, so that those connections are no longer in place. And as far as the sewer laterals go, Giseau mentioned that the cost of the lower laterals is included, at least in what the estimates for the improvements are. But there are private sewer laterals, the upper laterals, which also have some problems. And so, at some point in time, we have to recognize that as well, and bring our property owners and residents in with. If we're all in this to improve the system, there may be some responsibility, because you have the private, the upper lateral to take care of, there may be some repairs required there as well. So we have to make sure that we're addressing that as we go forward. And then the rehabilitation program, we need to make a point to repair the pipes with the most critical defects per the consent decree timeframes. And if we don't make those repairs, at least ensure that we are re-inspecting, to be sure that they're not getting any worse. And we need to develop that long-term rehabilitation program to be able to inform and educate councils in the future, as rate hearings come, and we have a need for the resources to be able to implement these projects. So it's not something that we can solve right away, right now, one time only. This is something we're going to be in for the long term, to be able to be sure that our collection system is in good shape, and it doesn't deteriorate to the point where we have more problems with overflows or more problems with infiltration. So the next steps, we'll be working to complete the CCTV inspection program. We should be complete, I believe, by the end of this month. We'll use that information to help us develop some of these specific rehabilitation projects and confirm the, essentially, the extrapolation of the data that RMC used for their conclusions. We will complete the master plan based on your input, feedback, and direction, and bring it back to you in January. And as I mentioned before, we'll be looking at integrating all of the future costs that we see to understand the system needs, and then develop a financing plan and fee increase options as we go forward into the spring. Because we're facing that kind of inevitable discussion about how do we improve the system and maintain the system and rehabilitate the system, and we have to have the rate increases to be able to do that. We're initiating the design of the highest priority capacity improvement projects. And as I mentioned earlier, construction, we hope to begin in six to nine months on the first of those. And then we will be coming back and looking to schedule the sewer rate hearings in late spring of 2013. So that's kind of our presentation as it relates to the sewer master plan, and hopefully provided you some context and some information. And at this point, we would be interested in your questions and your feedback. I'm here, as well as Giseau and Paul Baker, our maintenance superintendent, who is in charge of our sewer maintenance crew and that whole program, is here as well, if you have questions and want to know a little bit more about that. So I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor, and we'll take your questions or comments.
Very good. Okay. Questions from council? Do you have any? Couple? Okay, well, you start down here, Karen, and move this direction. Karen, go ahead.
At this point in the process, I was curious what has happened with the results of the smoke testing that was done? Have repairs and changes been made, or was that just a kind of initial test period to see what kinds of things we'd come up with?
We basically have just received the data, and so we've identified from the contractor who did the smoke testing, the locations where we had the, whatever it was, the cross connection or illegal connection or whatever. And so now, we're going to have to come up with a plan to remedy those. And as I mentioned, at least in part, we may use our sewer maintenance crew to help us uncover them, dig them up, figure out what it is, and then we'll be contacting the property owners going forward where we had those occurring on private property.
But we haven't contacted any of the private property owners yet, to see if they react?
We have not done that yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Just a couple, thank you. I was wondering, you were talking about, Giseau, you were talking about some of the new piping that has to go in, because the old pipes are, in many cases, or probably in all cases, made out of clay. Couple of questions. One is, what material are the new pipes made out of? One is, what material are the new pipes made out of? And, and the second that goes along with that is what is their capability during an earthquake? Or what typically happens if there's a major earthquake to sewer lines? Because they're all underground, we don't, we don't see them.
Well, you know, the, first of all, the, the older clay pipes are, are the ones that were installed typically before 1960 were, were installed with, with rigid kind of mortared joints. So that, a lot of times that mortar has deteriorated, you know, there, there was no, no ability to move very much. That's one reason why they're leaky and why they get cracks. The more, the latter era clay pipes that were put in, say, after the 60s, were put in with rubber gasketed joints. So they've got a lot more ability to, to, you know, be leak-free and, and to withstand motion. But, you know, a lot of the, the pipes that are going in these days are plastic, you know, PVC pipe. You've probably heard of pipe bursting. It's a technique that's very commonly used these days to replace an existing, often clay pipe without having to excavate. You know, there's a cutting, a kind of a bursting head that, that's inserted in the manhole, goes through the pipe, breaks it apart, and then it pulls in another, usually a, a plastic, usually a high-density polyethylene pipe. So those are, are the, the most common, you know, materials that are currently being used for pipe replacement. Clay pipe is still used and there's still some agencies who swear by clay pipe, but they're using the more, you know, the more current, you know, more modern clay pipe with, with flexible joints.
Well, that sort of leads into my, my next question is about, what about the lines, these laterals that, that run between property lines, they, you know, through easements and that sort of thing? I, I had a personal experience with this, one on New Year's Eve a couple of years ago and another one almost 365 days later. And I finally had it repaired, but I realized that the sewer line went out in, behind my house and then down into a, you know, sort of a main line that was in my neighbor's backyard. And I got to thinking, how the heck do you replace something like that? I mean, you have to tear down fences and take out people's, parts of people's yards. How do you address?
That, that is a challenge. You know, easement lines are definitely a, a challenge. You know, one advantage of pipe bursting is that you don't have to excavate. So sometime, a lot of these easement lines, there'll be a manhole in the street, a manhole in another street, and then it will run between, you know, between houses from manhole to manhole. So you can potentially pipe burst that as long as you're not too close to foundations, you know.
Right, right.
But, you know, ideally, you want to try to get pipes out of easements if, if at all possible, but sometimes that is, it's difficult to do. You know, there's probably no real easy answer to that.
Well, I was just curious. Thank you. Down here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, folks. That was actually a very interesting report to read. I, I enjoyed it quite a bit, as, as I did the presentation. What's, what are communities' long-term experiences with more modern plastic pipe? In other words, you were talking about how communities have learned over time about some of the fables associated with vitrified clay pipe. So what have they learned about the replacement stuff?
Well, unfortunately, you know, plastic pipe probably, a lot of plastic pipe probably hasn't been in the ground, you know, long enough to know what the long-term, you know, projections are. But, you know, most plastic pipe, yeah, the other thing with the, the old clay pipe, very short sections, you know, often three-foot sections between joints. So you have a lot of joints.
Okay.
Whereas, you know, the plastic pipes now and even the, the new clay pipes have longer, you know, longer sections. So again, less opportunity for water to get in.
Okay. Next question I had is, I, I thought you did a nice job in laying out the, the sort of trade-off between doing a more comprehensive solution and doing just a point repair kind of solution, the thirty-two versus sixty-seven million dollars. One thing that I wasn't too clear on about though is, from your description, the thirty-two million dollar option, the, the less expensive option, I guess the way I would describe it, my takeaway was it, it is not expected to sort of buy us as much time in the future. So in terms of, you know, if I looked over, say, a, a 20- or 30-year horizon of what it's going to cost to do, you know, maybe define that to be my total cost of ownership type, how do they compare? I mean, is it thirty-two and then down the road someplace you're going to, you're going to spend another fifty, so it's really eighty? Or is even getting at?
I think probably you're, we didn't really define a timeframe as it related to that except that we, we, we had a, a 20-year horizon in which we were going to work.
Okay.
So if we looked at point repairs, you know, as the rehabilitation strategy, we had a cost for the first six years and then years seven through 20. And so essentially, we'd be looking to invest that much over that 20-year period. But we wouldn't be buying as much with the point repair approach because what we're also, what we're doing by replacing pipes from manhole to manhole is we're buying longer life and, and then a, we're minimizing the need to go back in and try to fix the, the smaller defects that have gotten worse. So potentially, you could be looking at pipes that we would install that might have, say, a 40-year life expectancy, something like that, and probably end up needing or being in service for 50 years. But we would be constantly chasing the defects that would continue to break in the old pipes. And so over time, it's hard to say, but we might spend well more by continuing to go back and do point repairs versus the, the strategy of installing the pipelines.
And that was my sense from your presentation and from the materials. And I know we're not actually making decisions here tonight. For what it's worth, from my perspective, if there is a way to provide a little more enlightenment, a little more visibility on the financial dimension of what you just said, that would help me because it's a legitimate question for a public agency to say, well, you know, do we want to spend a lot of money and solve the problem for a long time or do we want to spend less money and plan on spending more money over the longer haul, but that's, you know, going to deal with down the road? And it's not that one is right and one is wrong, it's a trade-off having to do with a lot of different things. So getting better insight to making that trade-off would help me. Just out of curiosity, do we, do we happen to know how long ago, when was the last time that we made a significant investment in the sanitary sewer system in town on, on the scale of what we're talking about here?
No, I don't.
Nineteen thirty-five, when we first put in.
That's what I, that's what I suspect.
I don't really know.
Okay. That's about, yeah, so it's basically, this would be the first time, in a sense, since the initial implementation. Okay.
Yeah, there've been times over the last 20 years where we've done multimillion-dollar projects, but nothing as comprehensive.
As sixty million dollars.
As sixty million.
Okay.
Since the, probably the system was.
Of course, if you go back far enough, a few million dollars might translate with inflation to sixty million, so. Last question for, for now, and they'll turn the mic over. You commented about, at some point, we need to look into the state of the upper laterals. What are the ways that communities use to do that assessment? I mean, I, I was having a hard time visualizing that we'd like require homeowners every few years to have their laterals inspected, but maybe that's what other communities do.
Well, if, if I remember correctly, one of the things the council discussed and approved was a sewer lateral ordinance, which had at least some requirement for inspection and repair when redevelopment and development was occurring. So that we, we would kind of be able to capture the opportunity when major construction is going on anyway. It's something that would be a major benefit to the system.
Right, I remember that.
Be able to take care of that at this moment in time. So it's, at least that, as I understand it, was as far as the council was willing to go. And I, I believe there was at least a part of it that was proposed that might be anytime a property is sold, you had to go through and inspect and potentially repair the lateral. But that wasn't implemented. So I think it's getting at it now a little bit at a time. I think trying to, to get it all is going to be very challenging.
Just from my own identification, did that, that trade-off discussion or discussion take place before I joined the council? That's what I thought. I never hear anything about it, but, okay.
It's essentially if you're doing a, a major, residentially, if you're doing a major remodel or adding a bathroom, if you're adding facility.
Something that might affect the sewer line. Okay. The reason it's of potential interest to me is, is I had reason, I had cause the other day to actually look at some statistics on how frequently housing stock changes hands in San Carlos. And I was actually surprised that it was, it's around four to five percent a year of the housing stock turns over, but if you translate that, that says, you know, it takes 20 years for it to turn over. So it's, it's, and I imagine major redevelopment projects are even less frequent than that. So, thank you.
Mr. Walter, do you know if, have any feel for the, for costs that might be in this report would be like double-counted relative to the SBSA's project? In other words?
There's, as far as I know, there's nothing in this report that deals with any of the costs that are related to SBSA.
So SBSA is going to put a new pump station in or we're going to repair something in San Carlos? Because that's the thing that caught my eye and I didn't get a chance to check it. It's different from what your pump station, or not your, but the pump station in this is.
Yes.
It's a different situation.
Yes, it is. And that's why I said when, when, when we have to kind of integrate all of our potential future costs, we have the SBSA program that we, we yet don't have a lot of detail on as they go forward, but we do know, I think at one point it was identified as potentially being as much as 59 million for the city to have to be responsible for.
Right.
So we're waiting for them in the spring to come back with what their next bond issuance is going to be for and how much that might mean for us. We don't know that number right now.
Maybe this question is for Mr. Walter, but so it's going to be, let's just pick a number, sixty million dollars, plus it's going to be the SBSA's portion, sixty million dollars. I think it's 59 is ours. It's a hundred and twenty million dollars. You can't really raise the rates to make a hundred, at least I don't think you can, and still be alive, raise the rates enough to make that happen over a period of time, unless you went over 50 years, maybe. I don't know. So is it, what is the, what is the require, do we need to go to a vote, and I can't, and I, and maybe you don't know the answer, relative to bonding? You know, because I know Bowling game went through this, this a few years ago, where the first time they tried to do it, they got nowhere with the populace. And the second time, they were able to convince the folks that they were able to work it through and got some, some bonding and, and able to, to work it, work it down.
I, I have many of the same questions that, that you expressed, Vice Mayor. One of the questions I have about the, as we get into the rates is how much of the existing rate structure can, creates cash flow for ongoing capital projects?
Right.
And then spread that over, over 20 years? So how much above and beyond that are we really talking about?
Sure.
And of course, probably, you know, an equally large piece is the SBSA. Now, you do have to go to the, the voters if you're going to bond for a project and you need a dedicated, you know, revenue stream, you know, property tax or whatever you're going to do. But in the case of the rates, there, there may be a way, particularly given the very low nature of interest rates right now, to dedicate some of the existing rate towards a bond issuance to raise capital to do some of the projects. And that, I'm sure, will be something that's analyzed as part, as part of the financials as we go forward with this project.
Because just, just raising sewer, I mean, I can understand you could raise sewer rates seven percent a year for, you know, maybe an infant item, but seven percent would cover a certain amount of cost, but I don't think it would anywhere come close to covering this and the SBSA. I mean, you'd have to do it 15, 20 percent a year, it seemed to me, to, just in just sewer rates. Again, I'm not just back of the envelope guessing, I, I just can't fathom that, that it wouldn't be just out of the, out of this world, numbers.
Yeah, I, I agree. I have the, like I said, I have the same concern, but, but there's so, there's such a large cost for capital projects and SBSA projects that are built into the existing rates, it really becomes a timing issue.
Right.
When, when are those components paid off versus, you know, how does that relate to the next 20 years of the plan? And so how much additional financial resource do we?
Are we going to be, when you, when Mr. Walter, you mentioned that you're going to be getting some stuff from SBSA, hopefully after the first of the year, and we're going to putting, put more of these pieces of the puzzle together? Is that when we begin to look at how, how you'd be able to, sort of toward my question, how we would be able to figure out a way to maybe a little of this and a little of that and a little of this? And again, it's, it's not all going to happen tomorrow, we're not fixing it all tomorrow, but over a span of time?
That's, that's correct. It's our, it's our desire to create as, as comprehensive a plan as we can in terms of the maintenance requirements of the system, but also the plan to fund it. And, and the goal is that in 2013, those two plans will be developed and the council be in the position to really make well-informed policy choices for how they would like to maintain the system and the rates going forward.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Can I chime in on that just for a second, follow up? The, you had showed us the, that one chart before where, I think it was the first five years' worth of projects, it was about 20 million dollars, and the remaining 15 years, 16 years after that was 50 some odd million. The total was like 70 because it was the 62 plus the nine.
Seventy-two million.
Seventy-two million. So, and as I recall, you also mentioned, Mr. Walter, that, that the rate increases we approved last year were going to generate about nine million dollars over five years, right?
I'm sorry, Mr. Albert.
That's okay. Using this chart, and then the other factoid was, was generating, the sewer rates that were already been approved would generate about nine million dollars over five years, which means if we didn't act to lower them, they would generate 36 million dollars over 20 years, right?
I, essentially, yes, roughly speaking, you're right about that.
Which would effectively, and I'm doing a huge hand wave here about timing and cash flow and everything, that effectively pays for half of the 20-year project right there. It does not, which does not include the SBSA stuff, right? Absolutely. But it's, it's, it's part of it, to your point.
Right. And I think it's, it's really important for us to, to recognize that because the, the fact that council acted so quickly to move forward with the capacity assurance projects, that, that took a lot, going back and increasing the rates and saying, this is the work that we need to do. If we continue the idea that we have an ongoing program of maintenance and rehabilitation that we need to fund, then it makes a lot of sense that that rate increase that was used for that first five years would be able to be leveraged into future improvements as well.
To be, absolutely.
Some of my questions were around this subject that we're on, and I'm just trying to think of it principally. If some of this is paid for by some kind of bond measure, then it means, what that does is allows us to get the money more quickly, do the projects, do the improvements more quickly, yet because it's, we're doing bonding and the bonding would be paid off through a rate increase, but it's, it's smoothed out over future years, and it also impacts future rate payers as opposed to current rate payers. Is that kind of the concept?
Yes, that is. And again, your, your decision to go with bonds versus cash and carry, so to speak, is that you, you're able to have the money come in sooner, pay it off over a longer period of time at a lower rate or a lower hit to the rate payers themselves. But it is a long-term obligation.
Long-term, and you end up paying about 30% more because of interest and so forth. So, and I know, just, you know, speaking to the, the council in the past, I remember when I got on council and it was King Eaton and Tom Davids, I think. Back in that era, everything was cash and carry. That council did not like borrowing money, which would make me think, you know, let's go back even further. How did, how was all this originally paid for, this infrastructure? I can't imagine the city just, you know, when, when we incorporated, that we just paid for all this infrastructure. We probably bonded or borrowed money somehow or another.
Probably some sort of assessment district or it was paid for, at least in part, by the subdivisions and other development which occurred.
Right.
So there were, there were those improvements that were put in as a requirement of the development. And then maybe the, the way that they connected the system and made other improvements was to have an assessment on the other properties that were served by it.
Chair, I just wanted to add one thing about bonding. In the 1960s, I think it was the last time the city had a major sewer bond, and it was retired in the late 1980s. But I think since that time, the mayor's right, that most of the stuff we've done has gone through the rates and passion for it.
So the thing I would be looking for when we look at this in the future, and the rest of the council is welcome to chime in on this thought, when you bring it back to us, I, I think it's only fair to do a little bit of pay for it now, which you've already done with the rates on the nine million, because in some regards, folks who've done with the rates on the 9 million, because in some regards, folks who've been paying these rates have had a sewer system sitting under their feet that they're using, and it's in disrepair, needs repair almost immediately, some of this. So, it's only fair to, if you're a rate payer, to pay that. Should have been done long ago, probably. But then, I, I think you can justify some of this as being a benefit to, to future rate payers and users, and it's only, so it's fair to, to do the bonding for those, that aspect of the project, and, and smooth it out with rate paying over, over a longer term. But I think for staff to bring us a couple of different options that we can look at and wrestle with, and look at, I know you would do that anyways, but I'm just, you know, it'd be nice to have that. Give us some variables that we can look at to help us understand it and make decisions on which way we want to go. Is that fair enough?
Yes.
Okay. I did have a question on, I have a couple more things on the, on the lower, when we repair the lower lateral, does that create any kind of connectivity problem with the upper lateral? Does it create issues?
I'll ask Paul to address that issue.
Okay.
Because his crews are dealing with the connection, so to speak, between the upper and lower laterals.
Okay.
No, it, it shouldn't connect, I mean, there shouldn't be any connectivity problems.
Okay.
Pipes are all, like, at one point, and that's usually where the cleanout is, is the upper ladder stops, and then the lower lateral starts at that point, usually bands or something like that.
Is there, will there, there will be a material difference, though? Our lower lateral will be the, also the plastic pipe, or?
There will be a material difference with the new lower laterals. It would be polyethylene, probably, but there's still different adjoining mechanisms, so there's, it varies in size, and for the different types of pipe.
Okay. All right. Just curious about that, because it could be a, get into the discussion we had before about, do we do these lower laterals and say to the property owner, this is the time for you to do your part of the deal as well? But I guess we can look at that at a later time as, as well, right? Okay. And then, I was curious, it's, it's good to know that we've reduced by 50% the SSOs. So, I, I guess we're counting on these other improvements that we'll be able to capture the other 50% with all these other projects? We have a security in that, or a confidence in that?
Well, I think the, it's actually, it's more than 50%, because what, the number that was identified in the Baykeeper target initially was, there were 67 SSOs that were either from a lateral or from a mainline. And then, over that period of time, it, the, the goal is, the target is that they're reduced down to four.
Yeah.
So, that's a lot more than 50%. And the capacity assurance projects are the, the key element to reducing those mainline overflow occurrences. So, because they're replacing the lower laterals as well, we believe that that is going to give us the best chance at achieving those targets. Hard to say if it will be, because potentially you have locations which have an overflow because of conditions which are developing right now, but are not evident. So, we're, we're kind of using these as the best chance we have of achieving the target, that these improvements will give us the, the, the best chance for success.
Okay. So, it's all we can do, and we're hoping to get there, is what I hear about that.
It's that, plus it's the maintenance programs that Paul's guys are doing. The chemical root control, the regular video inspection, cleaning, and other kinds of things that they do. So, the operations program on a regular basis is a huge part of the, the continual maintenance of the system that's required.
I see. Okay, so adding in the maintenance, that's what'll get us there?
Right.
Okay. By the way, I see those guys in that truck, they're having way too much fun driving around.
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
Okay. They enjoy their job, right. And my last question is, then the projection of needs that Issa had spoken about, when we see this again in January, the data should catch up with, the, the data that we grabbed should catch up with these projections, we'll be able to refine those by then, or no?
The rest of the 40%, you're talking about the?
Yeah.
The rest of the system that was TV'd, I, I don't know, you know, what the schedule for that is. I think that was the plan at this point.
Well, what we want to be able to do is check that, check the information that we get in here in this last round.
Mm-hmm.
To see if there is just any really significant difference in the results from the first 60%. So, the extrapolation that RMC did was really based on, this is what we're seeing in the system through this 60% review in the videos that we have.
Mm-hmm.
If the 40% don't show any real significant differences, we're going to call it good and say the extrapolation was accurate, at least for what we need to do.
Because I heard at the last council meeting, some mumbling, that, no one up here likes polling, so, you know, the, the less that you can extrapolate, the better. I'm just, all right. And boom, bang, yeah. The only other thing I was going to say is, we do have, was it Channel 27? So, some of this video, these TV shows that you're creating, you know, we got airtime, you know?
You might be able to defray.
Be very interested.
Through the chair, we might be able to defray some of the cost by putting some things up on YouTube.
Yeah, there you go, yeah.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I had one other comment. I have to say, I, not that I'm surprised, but I was actually a little disappointed to see how sparsely attended tonight's meeting is by the public, because this is potentially one of the most significant cost impacts that we're going to be talking about, you know, beginning in earnest in early next year. So, in addition to the work that's going to be done behind the scenes, I would strongly encourage, to, to get the numbers together, I would strongly encourage staff, and perhaps working with the electeds, to try and get the word out to folks to say that they really need to tune into this. Because the worst thing that can happen to us is, is we look at a set of options, and we surprise people out in the community with whatever it is that we decide to do. They won't appreciate that. And since we want to fix the problem, we, we'd like them to not do that.
Yes, thanks. We will, we will be making sure, especially when we come back in January, and, and then the meetings beyond that are relevant on this topic.
Very good. Mr. Walter, thank you very much for a, a good report. We appreciate the study session, and all your help, too. Thank you. All right. That'll bring us on to, let's see, we did 10A already, we did 9A is discussion of the next council planning retreat. All right. Mr. Maltby.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Jeff Maltby, City Manager. My comments will be brief here. This item is on the agenda for you this evening, so that the council can have a discussion about the two retreats that you had in the last six months. First, back in January, the council held its first City Council, City Manager, City Attorney Retreat. During that retreat, the council had indicated that likely they were going to be participating in the strategic planning retreat for the last time in August. That retreat was held, it was very successful. Various council members during that retreat had indicated that maybe they would like to continue on. So, we've got sort of two conflicting council statements, so we thought we'd bring you back together as a council to discuss this, these retreat items, to see how you would like to go forward, what option you would like to see. Would you like to continue on with both? Would you like to go with one or the other? Would you like to combine them into a big one-day retreat Palooza-type event? Or how you'd like to go? My anticipation is that if we are going to continue with the, the smaller retreat, that likely we'd run a schedule one of those for January, and then if I'm not mistaken, I think our next strategic planning retreat is already calendared for February 26th?
I think it's 26th.
About that, yeah, okay. So, those are my comments. We'd like to hear from you on, as, in terms of what the council's preference is.
All right. Let's open it up for discussion. Anybody want to take the mic?
I like, I like option number three. I, I would like to have another council, City Council Retreat, where we get the opportunity to discuss what our priorities are for a six-month and, and actually rolling 12-month basis before the strategic planning retreat, and then also join staff for that. That would, that would be my preference, basically repeating what we, what we did this last time. But I'd be very interested in knowing what the other council members feel would be the most productive use of their time.
Mr. Collins?
Well, I also like option three, but I would like to combine it into one day. Maybe we have a morning session with everybody, and the council breaks off into a council-only meeting with just key staff people, maybe a city manager and city attorney, and we meet for lunch separately, and then come back and wrap up with the rest of staff. I just think that'd be a great way to get everything done in one day. So, that's my preference.
Right.
My, my biggest interest is, is frankly maintaining the initiative of having the governance team get together to talk about longer-term issues, and also process-related issues about how we work together. But I do agree that there's value in participating in the, in the broader, what has been previously called strategic planning discussion, so I'm happy to do both. To Mr. Collins's point about trying to combine them on the same day, I'm actually, I can go either way on that, the only caveat, or the only comment I would make is, I actually think that the governance team discussion, the smaller group discussion, really needs to take place first, because it sort of informs the, the subsequent discussion. So, I don't know how that would work in a single-day thing, and that's why it might be easier to do in two, but I'm, as long as we do both, I'm, I'm okay.
Just taking some notes. Go ahead, Mr. Griselli.
Well, in, in my experience, you know, and I, I guess you and I have been doing this for six, six years, or maybe even seven years.
Seven.
Six, certainly Mark started it, Mark Weiss started it. And, you know, even from the beginning, I think staff has come up with 85%, 90% of the items that are getting written down. I mean, it's not, it's, we might think we're smart, but staff is doing this every day, and they're coming up with a lot of ideas, and we're nodding, or we're not nodding, and we're approving, or we're not approving. Not that we don't have original thoughts, I don't mean to denigrate us, but the point is, that's where I think the real, the real meat of the matter is. I don't have, I don't have a problem having meetings, it's just that I want to make sure that they're useful to some extent. And I, I still, I guess, just having our own little, without any, I don't know what to say, not, not, not agenda, but, and maybe we need an agenda, maybe we need to have something that we can put our teeth into if we meet separately, and then have the larger meeting and, and attend that, and participate in that. Or we just set some, some ideas that we come up with, give it to staff, and they add on to other things, and off we go. The only problem with the, the second part is that there's no buy-in from us if we're not there to say, you know, that's really a great idea, but we don't think it's maybe the one that we can do. Meanwhile, they've already spent time and gone along, and, and then when do we, do we review it after, the day after, and go, nah, we don't like number seven? Thanks for spending the time on it, though, really appreciate it. So, I, I'm just trying to get the best use of our time, and, you know, maybe it's a smaller meeting between us, a couple of hours, and then having the, the larger meeting. On the same day, boy, that's a long day. If it's, if we meet for an hour and a half or two hours, and as good as we've done, we, we still get out at 1:30 or 2 o'clock on the other, that's a, that's a four or five o'clock day. I'm not saying we can't make it, but that's a long day. So, I, I would probably split them up, even if it's, you know, an extra day somewhere or an extra time, but it's a much shorter, much shorter meeting with, among ourselves. That's just a thought, so. I'd be happy to hear the mayor's comments.
I just had a thought. The order in that these meetings happen doesn't, I don't really care, but based on what Mr. Griselli was saying, it, I wonder if we might have maybe separate meetings? In other words, staff meets in the morning, and we meet in the morning separately. We, we have our own issues that we want to deal with. They're coming up with, they're formulating ideas for the, the strategic plan, and then we join them in the afternoon, they brief us, and we then provide feedback. Maybe that would, might, you know, that might speed it up, and maybe we set a goal to get out by 3:30 or 4 o'clock.
Through the mayor, if I may.
Sure.
That, that works with the exception that the city attorney and I can't be in two places at the same time.
Oh, I think we could figure out a way to. I think science is moving forward.
The 21st century, come on.
Yeah. When I figure that out, I'm going to definitely.
The other part, again, not to throw water, not to throw water, because I couldn't throw it that far, but the, the, again, people are spending, going to be, let's just assume that you could be, or you're in one or the other, they're going to be spending, let's say, a time on item seven, and they're going to spend an awful lot of time on item seven, and we come in later, item seven's a good idea. But thanks for spending an hour and a half on it, because it was really good. I think you have to, you have to be, well, the good thing about what we have now is you're there, or in real time, and we're saying, you know, eh, eh, up, down, it, it just seems like it, you're not, you're not, nobody's wasting their time or spinning their wheels. And that's the thing that always gets me on meetings, is that, you know, you want to be efficient. And I'm, I'm thinking that you can brainstorm till the cows come home on some of this stuff, but I'm just concerned that people are going to invest time, or energy, or whatever, and all of a sudden, we're going to come in and go, eh, thanks, though, it's okay. I don't know. That's just what I worry about.
I understand. I, I'm not married to any particular methodology.
So, my feeling about it is this. I think one of the reasons we came to a point where we felt like, you know, we need to have a more intimate meeting of just the council and a few staff members, the city manager, the city attorney, both of whom work at the pleasure of the council, is because the, the other process was beginning to feel a little stale, and we felt like all we're really doing is creating a, a to-do list for the staff for six months. And I think the other impetus for it was, we've got a pretty fresh council, you had people out there campaigning, talking to the community about how they view their community, what they see as being the needs, and yet you get on council after going through that process of campaigning and talking to the public, and you really don't have any venue for vetting those ideas. And part of it's because of the Brown Act, you know? Karen comes on the council, and she wants to talk to me, and I don't like her idea? It just stopped right there, because she can't then say, well, Matt didn't like my idea, I think I'll go talk to Ron, have coffee with him, see if he likes it. Because she just violated the Brown Act by doing it. The advantage of that gathering is it gives us an opportunity to share and talk about a lot of ideas, and I would say they tend to be more broader ideas, bigger ideas. And it's not like we're taking action on them or anything, but we get to see, well, how do, you know, how does somebody feel about putting a, you know, a park up on, additional park on Crestview? Is that a good idea? You know, what would somebody else think about that? And then, if it seems to have some legs to it, we can bring it to the council this meeting, and, and talk about it, and, and actually take action on it. So, I think there's usefulness, to borrow from what Bob was saying, about having that retreat of just the two, two staff members in the council. I'm not sure it needs to be on a regular basis. I think it needs to happen when we have a new council, like we just went through. And on occasion, I think the, the council should be left with that prerogative to throw down that card and say to the city manager, we're feeling like we need to have a council retreat. And otherwise, we just stay with the other process. I think the other, the other value I saw in us having the council retreat of the seven members is it did take this other process that was feeling stale and infuse some energy into it. My last comment is this. One of the things I always recognize when we have the council retreats with the entire staff, you all know, when we go around the room and, and she says, okay, tell, tell us what you liked about today. Invariably, you know, what, there's about, at most, there's what, about 15 of us or so? Half of us say, well, just getting to know, you know, the other members of the team as it were, and, and what I hear from staff oftentimes is, we like the council being here, because it, it gives us an opportunity to, to collaborate and discuss with them in a way we can't do in this format. This is a stifled format, right? But when, when we're at the retreat, it gives the staff members an opportunity to get to know the council as well, and they, they feel that team building and that leadership that they don't feel otherwise. And so, I think the other process. And so I think the other process that we've been doing for six or seven years, it's necessary. Just the question in my mind is, what do we do with us getting together, seven people? And just to close on that again, I think it's something that you schedule when you have a new council, and you leave the council the prerogative of scheduling it on an as-needed basis.
May I try and?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. I actually, as I was listening to people talk, this discussion reminded me for some strange reason of the process that was used by the Allies in World War II to figure out what they were gonna do. And those of you who have read about it know that there were a number of high-level meetings between the heads of the Allies, like Churchill and Roosevelt and Stalin, and sometimes other countries as well, who were sort of second-tier involved. And that was sort of setting the grand targets. It was deciding whether or not to invade the soft southern underbelly of Europe or go over through France, or go through Greece, or what the balance was supposed to be between the Pacific Theater and the European Theater. And that's pretty much where the discussion stopped, and they were very valuable, because at that point, they turned it over to guys like George Marshall, and I forget who the head of the English forces were. Stalin sort of played both roles, because Stalin was Stalin. And they figured out how it was gonna happen. And there was interaction between the two, because sometimes what happened is that the grand leaders would say, "Well, we want to do X," and then the staff would come back and say, "That's a nice idea, but we can't do that. Not, you know, not for five years." And so they adjusted the strategy. But there's a place for both. And for me, in, you know, even having been on the council now for about a year, I still see a lot of things that I would love to see us talk about for the longer-term future of San Carlos. And, you know, a couple of the meetings ago I mentioned about, I accidentally made that pun about not resting on our laurels on Laurel Street, because we've sort of completed the initial work that our predecessors started. Nobody else may have an interest in that, but I would love to have a chance to talk about that, to determine whether or not we do have an interest in perhaps doing something else. And I have a funny feeling that my colleagues probably have things of their own that they'd like to talk about. So they're really two separate things. And I think Matt's right, the mayor's right, we don't have to always plan on having these meetings, but I would love to have this, at least this next one, and probably the one after that. So I'll just leave it at that.
I would concur with you, Mr. Alpert, on that. That I would rather take the approach of that we are going to have a council retreat and then make the choice that we don't need it at this point in time, because I think there are some different topics that we don't get the opportunity to discuss in the course of the agenda without the risk of making it go overtime quite a bit. And so I would, I would like to be able to see us at least do it this next time, and maybe get better at the process. I think what you were saying, Mr. Mayor, about the, what we, the benefits that we got out of the last time, I think we could surprise ourself with, you know, some action, we're not gonna repeat the same benefits because we can't, but I think we might surprise ourselves with some of the other ways in which we can go into that strategic planning meeting and actually be able to get something more out of it. And I think that's why that strategic planning meeting went well, was because we'd had the opportunity before the meeting. And for example, I think, Mr. Collins, you brought up an idea that was added to the plan, taking a look at a possible other freeway entrance. It would have, that's the kind of thing I would have liked to have talked about if in the future we would have the opportunity to talk in the council retreat and share those ideas, so there aren't any surprises to one another of us about ideas that we're raising in there, and get an opportunity to understand the different points of view and not be constrained in the time of the strategic planning session. So that's just what I'm thinking right now. And I would prefer to see them be on separate, separate days. I think that would be more effective.
I would too, because working, you know, my issue with that is, you know, I'm trying to run a business as well, and so to dedicate a whole day.
I can see the efficiencies of trying to do everything on one day, but I think it actually would end up working out better if everyone has the time to separate them. So that's where I would be willing to invest the time taking that approach. So that's what I'm thinking right now, based on having heard everyone share their point of view.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is we should probably just address the most immediate need with something along the line of option three, and schedule something for January, that's the seven-members meeting, and we'll keep with the February meeting for the fifteen-member meeting, I'll call it, and the council will attend that.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is that fine?
Fine.
Okay. Let's go with that, then. Do we have anything scheduled for January right now, or?
No, we'll begin contacting you to work on a date as soon as we can.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so we're not gonna throw any dates out on the table right now?
The bowl games.
That are available or are unavailable? Okay, I just didn't know if anyone had any blocks of time that weren't available. Okay.
But I'll just say this, rather than us do that from the dais right now, if council members have meetings in January, or dates in January that especially don't work, let the city manager know.
Okay.
Okay? Let's do it that way. And then he'll come back with some recommendations.
Actually, if you could let the city clerk know, she'll.
City clerk, okay. All right. We've covered that, we've got items 10B and C to go through. So let's take on item 10B, which is consideration of introducing an ordinance, amending our municipal code on purchasing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'll just kind of briefly summarize both of these two ordinances, because they're somewhat related, but they're different in distinct ways. 3.12 is our municipal code section for purchasing of supplies and materials, whereas 3.14 is public projects. And one is basically a local ordinance, that you have authority to delegate certain powers to the city manager for letting contracts for supplies and services only. And then 3.14 for public projects is basically adopting the state public contracting code. It's got a long technical name. It's the Uniform Cost Accounting Act. And that, we're just adopting in 3.14 the recently updated statewide limits for those contracts. So I'll start with 3.12. We haven't updated the contracting authority for the city manager for purchasing supplies and materials since at least, I think it was back in 2003 that it was last looked at. No, correction, 2005, when Mark Weiss was first hired, that's when it was looked at. It might have been just before that, at the end of Mike Garvey's term. Back then, it was set at $50,000 overall cap, and there was a $500 threshold, and then a $5,000 threshold. And so the proposed ordinance would increase the $500 threshold, where no bid is required at all, to $1,000. Then there'd be an informal process for between $1,000 and $10,000, and then there'd be a formal bid. Three vendors must be selected for the, for up to $75,000 from $50,000. That's the basic change that's being proposed. Now, I have to say, this is definitely a policy discussion for the council. I did provide at the dais tonight a survey that I conducted, that I put at your places. It kind of runs the gambit. A lot of cities are at $50,000, some are $25,000, some are, you know, San Mateo's at $100,000, Redwood City is at $60,000. Some cities that are further out in the Bay Area are, Corne Madera is at $80,000, and there's a couple of cities that don't really have a limit in their municipal code. It's, but it does require a formal process for the city manager to approve with the bids. So that ordinance is up for introduction tonight, the proposed change to 3.12. So I'm here to answer any questions about it. The new ordinance mirrors almost exactly the existing ordinance, except the numbers are changed.
Okay, questions? Anybody have any questions? Okay, I don't see any questions, so good, good job on reporting. Discussion.
So I could talk about the other one, or do you want me to sit down and come back up for attention?
Let us do one at a time. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, actually, I can support this, I can also see not making the change that's being proposed. My bigger concern, which is related, at least I believe it's related to this, is thinking back to the recent Council of Cities Dinner when we had a presentation by a number of financial professionals in San Mateo County about fraud and fraud in the public sphere. And I want to be very clear here, I have the utmost confidence in Mr. Malpe and his staff, so I'm just, but prudence and good practice means that we deal with those questions regardless of how we feel about staff. And so the question I have whenever I think about increasing approval authority limits is, what are the audit processes that we can rely on, or should be relying on, to be comfortable that monies are being expended properly? If you think about it, you know, an audit's an after-the-fact assessment of things. To some extent, an approval authority level is a before-the-fact control over who gets to do what. So they're sort of, they're not, they're sort of a little bit, you can trade off one against the other. And I frankly, I'm not actually too clear on exactly how thorough or sophisticated our fraud auditing is, so that's my biggest reservation about making any change, frankly, in the approval limits. I don't know whether it's something that can be addressed tonight or not, but.
Okay. Do you have comments?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
You used to do this for a living, as they say, but, you know, both sides, an auditor and keeping the set of books. I mean, it's, I think I mentioned this to Mr. Malpe earlier, some people are comfortable with $5,000, because that's the biggest check they ever saw in their life. Some people are comfortable with $5 million, because they see those every day. And we've all had different experiences. Some of us have worked for large companies, some worked for small companies, some of us had internal control of one person, which was terrible internal control, or we had 25. I echo your comments, I think the key is what's in place. Whether it's $50,000 or $75,000, personally, I don't think it makes any difference if the proper authorities and proper, you know, things are in place. You can make it $5 million, makes no difference. But if they're not in place, $5,000's too much, you know, because nobody's watching the store. It's just, stuff's wandering around. So I think that as we go on, I mean, let's put it this way, $50,000 today is different than $50,000 less, hate to say this, five years ago. It's just different. There's a whole lot of different things that happen. I think as long as we're going out and doing our internal control with the auditors and doing our proper procedures, I'm not as concerned about the amounts as I am those. And so I'm wide open to making this, you know, it's like anything else. The more we make it, I'm not trying to make it easy for the staff, I don't mean it that way, but more make it efficient helps the city. Or we can just have a consent calendar of seventeen items every two weeks, or eighteen items, and they all, you know, run to the same dollars. And maybe that's good, because then we get to see where some of these extra dollars are spent, where normally, if we're not looking at the accounts payable, that I am, and maybe you all are, but I certainly am, every week and a half or two weeks that I get from accounting, and seeing where the big dollars are going. Because that's where I'm, I worry, the big dollars. I mean, a little, if somebody wants to game a system, they can game it for 20 bucks or 50 bucks, it can happen, and you'll never find it unless you look at every item. We all know that, we've all worked in financial areas. Where's our own checkbook? You know, where's the 50 bucks? Oh, my God, I can't balance this sucker. Is it important? Well, it is if you only have $100 left in your checking account. You know, if you have $500,000, it's like, okay, 50 bucks, I'll just write that. Maybe it'll come back next month. So I can understand doing this, and I have no problem extending it or expanding it, as long as the controls that we have for our audit, both internal audit, and I think we have an internal audit, right?
Yes, we do.
As well as our internal audit, as well as external audit, standards are in place. That's just my opinion.
Others?
What are those internal audit standards? I guess I would like to hear more about.
Well, there, I wouldn't be the best person tonight to talk to about that, and Ms. Mendenhall isn't here. However, they are, they're more robust than what was, since all five of you were at the Council of Cities Dinner, I'll reference the Council of Cities, they're more robust than that discussion might have led you to believe, where our auditors do do spot checks on contracts, our contracting procedure, our cash handling, where they go back and they review specific transactions, looking specifically for whether or not we're violating our own internal policies on how we handle cash, how we let contracts, and do those kinds of things, as well as the specific instance of fraud itself, and are we being misled. In terms of our purchasing policies, we have some very robust policies in the city that were put in place during this last decade. So to let a contract in any amount in this city, and there's different requirements for how you go about selecting the vendor based on different quantities. So if it's less than 5,000, you can do it very informally by getting some quotes over the telephone for services or product that the city be purchasing, and make the selection that way. If it's over that amount, things need to be done in writing through a RFP process, or informally, and then you have the RFP process, I think it's beyond, is it 20?
Twenty-five.
Is it 25? 25, we do a formal written RFP process. Every contract that gets paid by the finance department has the administrative services director's signature on it, has the city attorney's signature on it, the city clerk's signature on it, the city manager's signature on it, and then is processed by the finance manager and one of the two senior accountants, and then the account tech staff. So we have, you know, a fairly robust finance function here. We provide some additional finance services to other entities, where we handle the accounting and purchasing for them as well. And I like the idea, you know, I mean, it resonated with me as well of talking with a forensic accountant. We've had to do some forensic counting over the years when we've had specific issues. Typically, they've been in the other direction, where we've wanted to audit a contractor who is providing services for us. But we've also had personnel issues in the past that have touched on that kind of thing, not in the area of fraud, but have made it so that we wanted to look at whether or not there was, at least we thought maybe there was some potential there. So that's something we do have a little bit of experience with. I like the idea. I talked a little bit with the administrative services director about that after the last presentation, and I think that's something that we would talk with our existing auditors about and look into further, so.
And, Mr. Mayor, another part of the safeguards is, when I see a contract that I'm approving, all the city's contracts has to form, no matter what the amount is, and I make sure that there is a memo that's on those contracts, so that I verify that the procedures for that level of contract have been followed. And that, I won't sign it unless I have such a memo there. It's not just the amount of the contract, I want to make sure that we have followed, whether it's an informal bid process or a formal bid process, that it's, that we follow that process. And I also, over the years, I continue to update our contracts for these categories, so the right contract is used for the right category of contract. If it's a purchase of materials, if it's a professional services contract, there's all a separate form that is all part of the process that we've developed over the years to make sure that contracting is done in the correct way, and the city's interests are protected from a legal standpoint, as well as following our own ordinances. And I forgot to mention something in my presentation that was part of the reason for this, if I may, is, you know, we, San Carlos has become more of a contracting city than other cities, so I forgot to draw that distinction between some of the other cities that have lower thresholds. We do a lot more contracting because of the nature of how we deliver services in San Carlos, and one of the things that prompted this was, we, I started. And one of the things that prompted this was, I started to see contracts that were, when they were first let, were within the $50,000 number, but we had to come back to you for a relatively minor change that was something that was within the scope of the services that were originally contemplated, but because it went over the 50,000 number, we had to come back to the city council and spend time at the council level preparing staff reports. And so, that was part of the reason that we thought there'd be more of a prudent amount. It's not a huge increase, it's not the highest that other cities have, but it was enough to get us over some of those close-call contracts that we've seen several of this year.
This chart you provided us with, you have, for instance, with Belmont, you've got 5,000 and 25,000. What does that mean?
Well, their municipal code says 5,000 for the informal process, and 25,000 for the formal process. And then they recently, in 2010, they reduced it to $5,000 for all contracts. And the, I don't, I couldn't tell from the municipal code whether that temporary ordinance, because it was a temporary ordinance, has been, gone back to the regular one, so I was just reporting that.
So, if we do this, looking at this chart, we'd be higher than anybody.
On the peninsula, there'd still be, there'd still be Redwood City, San Mateo...
100,000 in San Mateo.
And then there'd be the cities in Los Altos, and then in Marin County, there'd be a couple of cities that would be higher than our number.
80,000 in Cuarta Madera. Sorry, I see that, yeah. Has our city treasurer chimed in on this?
I did not consult with the city treasurer beforehand, no. I don't know the answer to that question.
Curious to know his opinion. All right.
I have another question. I was curious to know if we've taken a look back over the past 12 months to see how many different contracts would have fallen in this category between the 50,000 and the $75,000?
We have not, but I did have that conversation with another council member recently, who just sort of asked me what my gut was. And my gut would be probably a dozen or less, and for the most part, as the city attorney described, they tend to be rather small amendments to contracts, you know, where you're maybe doing $6,000 or $7,000 change to a contract that was, you know, maybe $46,000 originally, and they're coming back. I can tell you, almost every time one goes on the agenda, I'll have at least one member of the city council ask me, why is this on the agenda? Why isn't this something you do as the city manager? And it's really, because they tend to be very administrative in nature from a policy standpoint, but we're just, it's really just about the threshold number. It doesn't allow, doesn't allow staff to create new contracts that didn't exist prior with, that had no funding, or whatnot. The council maintains quite a bit of financial control in the city. They maintain position control, overall budget control, in terms of what's out there. So, this is really a tool that would keep a few items off the agenda. It's not something I feel particularly strong about. At some point in time, just given inflation, you're just seeing, we're seeing contracts that traditionally had been approved at the staff level that are now requiring council action, and it's really just because of the cost of money over time. It's not because of something different that's happening in the city.
I have a question. Would, one of these other items that's summarized in here is about when things get over 75,000. So, if it's a dollar over, then it has to go to the council for competitive bid, except where, with at least three bids, but then it says the council may elect to proceed without competitive bid in any amount... I'm trying to read this. Where at least three council members vote that bidding would cause unnecessary expense or delay under the circumstances, so forth. Is that up for discussion tonight, or it's not really on the agenda, it's just in the summary?
That's part of the ordinance that's up for consideration and introduction tonight.
Okay. And also, the next paragraph talks about, correct me if I'm wrong, the, by the way, folks, I'm on page two, about a third of the way down the page. Purchases may also be made without formal bids through the city when there's immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety that's needed. And I've always understood that to be, you know, if we had an earthquake action, or a major storm, or something like that, we need to get supplies in here quickly.
That'd be a declared emergency, where the city manager has activated the emergency operations center and signed a declaration.
Is that, is that what that paragraph is referring to?
That's what it is referring to.
Right. So, in that case, I think that even authorizes the city manager to take action, buy materials, and bring it back to the council later.
That's right.
That's right. Okay. So, that one I'm fine with. The other one, though, I've often thought, and I remember when we looked at this years ago, and we were looking at cleaning up things, tightening up things, because of circumstances at the time, and this is what we came up with, and I didn't like it at the time, I felt like it should be a supermajority of the council, it should be a four to five, four out of five council members agreeing that there's no bid that's necessary. Because I think that needs to be a pretty strong decision, that we shouldn't be going out for a bid on something, when we're talking, you know, 75 and up. I suppose the rest of this, my feeling on it is, I'm okay with it, although what Mr. Olbert said struck me, that the thing with these things, even when you look at the warrants, the money's gone. The check's been written, it's paid, you might catch something, but the money's gone. The advantage of this is it gives you an opportunity to look at it before the money goes, if you're that concerned about it. But I don't, I understand the argument that inflation, 75,000. Where I feel a little uncomfortable is, you know, I was referring earlier, just a little bit earlier, to events of the past, and circumstances of the past. And I was very involved in that, and one of the ways that I saw what was going on is because I, these contracts had to come before the council, and I was starting to question things that were happening. So, if you make the threshold too high, you won't see those things until after the fact. So, I guess I'm feeling okay with the 75, it's, you know, inflation figure, but at the same time, I would like to look at this one paragraph here, see what the council feels. I think that should be a four, four out of five council members.
Mind if I speak to that just a little bit?
Sure, go ahead.
Because there are some, there are some nuances to that that become important with a three-fifths versus a four-fifths vote. One being that regardless of what you set the threshold at, you're gonna exceed the threshold with certain contracts, right, and that are gonna then come back to the council. And in the past, the way it's worked is, we bring out an item to the city council, and they vote, and if the majority vote, right, we add the money to the contract that's already in place, and on we go. And that doesn't require us to rebid that additional incremental piece of work, because we already have, have somebody on board that we're working with. And so, how would that work in the future? If we went to a four-fifths vote, there could be some potential issues there, where we might have to bid out a piece of work that somebody else is already, you know, let's say we've hired a designer, and they're doing design work for us, and then, you know, we realize, okay, it's gonna cost a little bit more than what we had thought, we come back to the council, we say, you know, one over 50, one over 75, whatever it is, and we need some additional authority, do we then...
Right, so, if I can jump on that, then, I was not thinking in terms of addendum to contracts, I was thinking in terms of new contracts.
Okay, so, new contracts, so that would be, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
And, you know, and beyond that, there would be, you know, it would take exceptional circum, I'm not sure that, maybe once or twice over the last seven years, we've recommended to the council, and typically, when we've done that, it's either been because somebody that we've worked with before has a lot of historical information or data about the city, and that we're doing some kind of study, and it makes sense to hire them specifically, or because they have a specific expertise, or because we're basically sole sourcing a product where we can only get it from one vendor, because that's the exact product we want. And, you know, so if the council wanted to make that change, I don't see, I don't see this coming up very often.
No, I don't either. To tag onto your point, it is an exceptional need that it comes up, which is why, in my mind, it should be done with an exceptional threshold on the vote. But I'd like to hear the rest of the council's opinion.
Ultimately, the only weakness, though, to the, to the argument is that it would still only take a three-fifths vote of the council to change the ordinance, the purchasing ordinance, to, back to three-fifths of the council approving it. So, you really can't get away from three-fifths of the council controlling this particular issue ultimately. It would just be, you know, a little more transparent, maybe.
Okay. Mr. Collins was after me before, so we'll go to Mr. Collins, and then Mr. Olbert.
Well, I'm, first of all, I don't have a, too much of a problem increasing the level to 75,000, and most of it's actually based, quite simply, on trust. I mean, I know the people involved, my only concern, I suppose, would be if the players change, and, you know, we look at, you know, who's in charge down, down the road, what, you know, what our, who our city personnel are. But one thing comforts me, I've been in Farno, we have one city credit card, that's a good thing, easily controlled, and that, I understand, thank you, Mr. Malpe, for pointing out that we are more of a contract city, and that we do a lot of contracting. I'm also not a big fan of supermajorities. I realize that, you know, these would be limited, rare circumstances or situations, but just philosophically, supermajorities have always bothered me. The question I have, though, that seems odd, and maybe the whole contracting issue is the reason for it, but I look at cities like Cupertino and Redwood City, which are bigger than we are, yet they have smaller limits. Belmont, they're sort of an outlier because their limit is so small. I think Cupertino is bigger, and...
2,000 people.
Pardon me?
52,000 people.
Yeah, so they're almost double in size, and yet, they have a much smaller limit. I'm not sure what South San Francisco's population is, I suspect it's bigger than ours, but it's half of what ours is now, so... And then the other question I had, Mr. Rubens, since you put this together, I'm not sure I understand what you mean by informal, you've got it in a couple of places, what, what does that mean?
Well, on the chart I was referencing, that's the limit for an informal process in those cities, where it does not have to go to the council. There's an informal bid process, it's just not the full formal bid process.
Like we have, yeah, on those...
All right. But I'm reasonably comfortable, we have a lot of checks and balances built into our system, and, I mean, the staff feels that it's just gonna streamline things, make their life easier, make our life easier, shorten our, our time in council meetings to approve these kinds of things. I'm not sure I have too much of a problem with it.
I think up and down the line, I'm getting the idea that 75 is okay?
No. I was, actually, yes, I'm okay with 75. I would like to encourage staff to continue along the lines of what Mr. Malpe was talking about, about reinforcing some of our audit procedures. Not that I'm necessarily saying they're weak, but I think that it's, it's a good time to do that when you talk about changing approval authorities. And I was also gonna make a comment, Mr. Mayor, to the issue of the three out of five, or four out of five. I take, I'm okay with the simple majority, because my understanding is that all of these votes to override the competitive bidding process would have to be taken in public. And there was a, there's a, you know, again, to your point, the money would be out the door, but there is a fundamental check process in there, with check and balance process in there, which is if, if the citizen really thinks we're doing something inappropriate, they will probably change who sits up in the bias.
Yeah, but that takes time, but okay. Ms. Clapper?
I think that, when you look at the chart, it may be more of a challenge to justify the $75,000, but I think when you look at our budget, and you look at the projects we do as a city, separate from what the other cities are doing, it, really, their limits seem extraordinarily low for some of the cities, that they're, it seems like they're micromanaging that process. So, I, I'm very comfortable with the, with the terms that are being proposed, and when I look at the details in the ordinance addressing what you were speaking about, where there would not be three bids, the way it's explained in the ordinance makes me feel more comfortable with the process, because it does lay it out, and, you know, for a certain situation is exactly how it would be handled. So, I'm, I'm comfortable with the way it has been proposed.
All right. Looks like we need, we're at a point where we could entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to introduce, I believe, ordinance number...
1451.
1451. An ordinance of the city council of the city of San Carlos, amending chapter 3.12 of the San Carlos Municipal Code regarding purchasing of city supplies and services.
Second. Grollkopf.
Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grollkopf?
Yes. Mr. Rubens, you wanna give us 10 seed in?
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, this ordinance that's being proposed for introduction tonight is to update the city's municipal code to be in conformance with state law, the Uniform Cost Accounting Act. Those, the limits that were, in our current ordinance, were updated in early 2011. As part of this process, I realized that those limits had been increased from 125,000 to 175,000, with exceptions for contracts up to 187,500. And also increased the forced account limits from 30,000 to 40,000, and that's where the city does work with its own forces, rather than through, through contract. But that, that particular provision also allows contracted work for up to $45,000 for public projects. That's why this is, the main difference for this is, it's a public project where you're, an example might be some of our park improvement projects are a public project. Some of the projects that we do in City Hall for remodeling, things of that nature, are public projects, whereas before it was services and, and purchasing of supplies and materials. So, this is a different category. That's why the limits are higher, because public projects usually require more dollars to complete, they're usually capital-type projects, and this is to conform our code with the state law.
All righty, very good. Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Rubens, a question I had was, do you, do you have any insight into what motivated the state to amend the limits, it sounds like relatively soon after they had just previously amended them? So, it was 2011, and then a year later, they changed them.
I think it was 2007 that they, they changed, no, I take that back, it looks like our code was last modified in 2005. I think it was, the numbers have gone up, so we, so they did it in, it took six years, I think, from the last update. We just haven't updated our code.
Haven't updated our code.
Oh, oh, the 2011s.
2011's when they enabled the higher limits, we just haven't updated our code yet.
I see. Okay. All right, thank you. I missed that.
Discussion, or you got another question?
No, just, I just want to be clear, we're just updating our ordinance to conform...
Well, with the state.
With the state.
That's what we're doing.
Yep. No other comments?
Yes.
I'm fine.
Yes, sir.
I actually do have one other quick question, which may be a Mr. Malpe question. How constraining are the... How constraining are the current limits on staff decisions? In other words, you talked before about how the administrivia of bringing things back. What's the corresponding answer for this one?
You know, typically, these public projects are so high-profile in nature that regardless of the limit—
You bring them back anyway.
We bring them to the council anyway. That tends to be the history on these types of projects. These are—these tend to be tied very closely to significant council policy decisions. And so I don't think, you know, I mean, one way or another, that this is gonna result in really any sort of change in how we go about doing our business here in San Carlos. I think this is really just simply conforming with what the state law is on the issue, but I don't think it'll change the practice one iota.
Thank you.
All righty, discussion? Motion?
I'd like to introduce ordinance number—
1452.
1452. An order to the city council of the city of San Carlos amending Chapter 3.14 of the San Carlos municipal code regarding public projects.
Second. Growcock?
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
No.
Mayor Growcock?
Yes.
Okay. We're adjourned. It was almost all a public works night, just with this last item and the other item before.
You can never have enough sewers.
That's right. All right, thank you, everyone.